Regina, can you take roll call please?
Carlos Hernandez.
Here.
Tara Gijic.
Here.
Shane Drift.
Excused and MCT meeting.
Robert Meyer.
Here.
On the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Please review council and see if there's any additions or deletions. If not, ask for motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have in addition to the agenda, the Ghost Lake film request that was sent to council via poll. It did not pass. It should have been added to the next agenda. So if we can add that request under me.
I would recall that a Ghost Lake discussion. Or. There's no other additions or deletions. Ask for motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the Ghost Lake discussion under Miranda's. Agenda item.
Both to approve.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for October first, two thousand twenty five. Questions or concerns to be met. Ask for motion to approve the meeting minutes of October first, two thousand twenty five.
Both to approve.
Move by Tara, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Marina is gonna read this to us.
Letter A on the consent agenda is contract with Dave Dance to prepare FY twenty twenty five IHBG competitive grant. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter B, statement regarding the passing of Ernie Stevens. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter C, statement regarding federal shutdown. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter D, October twenty twenty six RTC financial contingency plan. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter E, contract with Custom Theaters for install key access and data cabling for the Boys Ford Tribal Admin Building. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter F, contract with LZK Construction LLC for Vermillion Public Works Building Key Access and Data Cabling. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter G, leave share revision policy. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter H, request to use Boysport logo for Northland Climate Resilience Collaborative Presentation. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter I, resolution number thirty-three dash twenty twenty-six. Modification of residential lease for Frank Billibren Senior. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter J. Resolution number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-six, new recreational lease for Christina Morrison. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter K, resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-six, termination of residential lease for Sean Billibren and Rosemary King. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter L, resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-six, termination of residential lease for William S. Day. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter M, service line agreement with Lake Country Power for new service at Vermillion Lot. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter N, financial contingency plan phase one start October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter O, authorization for chair to sign memorandum of agreement for project BE dash twenty-five dash ninety-three for construction of sanitation facilities to serve BIA hip and other category homes. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter P, letter of condolence for Roy Smith I triple R authorizing chair to sign. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-six, approving the Boys Ford probate code. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter R, appointment to Minneapolis and Duluth precinct boards for special election. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter S, financial contingency plan statement number two. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter T, policy for reloadable card policy for ICW Department for Emergency Client Needs. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter U, request for RTCE for employee Halloween party. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter V, contract change order number one for Utility Systems of America, Big Woods Transit Water Wastewater Project Blasting of Lead Rock. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. Letter W, detention services agreement with Arrowhead Regional Corrections for Adult Detention Services at NERC. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent. And finally, letter X, sole source request for DocuSign twenty twenty-five renewal. The vote was three, four, zero against zero silent.
One more time. The, I ask for motion to read, to approve the consent agenda as read.
Both to approve.
Moved by Robert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any solid motion carried? First item on the agenda is Morgan Olson. She is here to speak about the joint powers agreement, the JPA, um, with the Lake Vermilion Sudan Underground Mine State Park. Lodge Lake. Is Morgan joining us online? Hi Morgan, how you doing today?
Hello, I'm doing well. I hope you guys are doing well as well. Um. So I'm here to present on the JPA. We want to enter with the state. Um, and we're requesting approval and um, asking chairman to sign it. Um, so this JPA is um, through the Minnesota DNR and it's um, in conjunction with the Lake Vermilion Sudan Underground Mine State Park. Um. And they're asking us to collaborate on a project um, to create a recreational and educational trail center, which we're calling the Lake Lodge for now. Um, at every step of the way, um, they wanted the band to be present and have our voices heard. So just a little background on the JPA. Um, the project was supposed to begin on September fifth, but um, it will now begin whenever all required signatures are collected. Um, and the project will end on June thirtieth or until all obligations have been fulfilled. Um. So in exhibit B on the JPA, um, there's itemized costs associated with different tasks to be completed. And the total obligation of the state will not exceed fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents. And the state representative for this project is Melinda Anderson. Um, but also I will be taking the lead. Um, I work as the tribal archivist. And then also Jalen Strong, who's the Heritage Center Director, and the tipple will be involved with this project. Um. So if we're looking at exhibit B, um, we have included engagement from tribal members in this project, which includes um, an elders meeting at most of the steps um, at two hundred dollars a meeting and we plan to provide like food or gifts um, to these elders for their feedback and their knowledge on where this project should be headed. Um, also we'll be updating tribal council. Um. At these various steps as well. And my, as the lead on this project, my duties will be to attend meetings. Um, with the Lake Vermilion Sudan Underground Mine State Park members, um, as well as the DNR. Um. That and those will be both online and virtually. Um, and I'll also be participating in interview processes for contractors. Um. And I'll also be getting, like I said, the feedback from both the elders meeting and tribal council and I'll be providing those um, different, the different things I learned from those meetings and memos and other forms of written feedback to the DNR. And so the project itself um, again is the Lake Lodge. And it will be um, leaving as little of a footprint as possible on the land. There is already a water treatment center there. And it's a pretty, um, it's pretty deforested already, so there won't be much impact on the habitat or the land there. Um. I believe council has a copy of the slideshow from the state park. Um, we already went through that at one of the council meetings, which kind of explains more about the project. But um. We also got tabled at that meeting and we went to a Monday morning meeting um, with Shane. And it seemed to be a little more um, accepted there because we sent the JPA back to Jeff after there were some concerns about um, five point one in the agreement or the, yeah, the joint powers agreement. Um, and the concern was around tribal sovereignty. And uh, amendment was added to make sure that our tribal sovereignty was protected at all steps of this project.
Sounds like interesting project, Morgan. Appreciate you presenting this and being able to have a voice for, have a voice in what's going to be presented out in the state. So, thank you. Does then, anybody have any concerns or questions, Tara or Robert? Now that's where a motion to approve the JPA, the Lake Vermilion Sudan Underground Mine.
I don't have no real concerns. I, you know, I like the idea of this, but I want true history being told if there's, you know, with any in all of this, I think in the last uh, one of the, something I think the, one of the mines wanted to do a uh, a learning or teaching type thing and they you know, didn't have it exactly right and they didn't even have us in our eighteen fifty-four treaty area. I mean, it's just, you know. I want the truth to be told. That's all there is to it. I don't want no uh, trying to make the mines look better and stuff because there is a history that has happened with our reservation and uh, I'm not gonna let that die. I'm not gonna let that go away. I need to make sure people know that this did happen to us and and uh, it wasn't a good thing, but you know, I really like the collaboration. I like the working together, but I just want all truths to be told, not sugarcoated to make somebody look better. Thank you.
That's a very good point, Robert. Um, and I, I hope when we're talking to the elders at the elders meeting and talking with the council, um, these truths can be um, kind of collected and brought to the DNR in order to um, create an accurate sense of history in this educational portion of the project.
It's valid concern, Robert. I like how you brought that up because we are concerned and want to make sure that the history is told in a correct manner, just not to please stakeholders, I guess. But thank you, Morgan. Um. There's no other questions or discussions. Ask for motion to approve the JPA.
I'll move to approve.
Move by Robert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor. Favor say aye. Any opposed? Any solid motion carried? Thank you, Morgan, for joining us today.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
You, Morgan, Jalen.
Look forward to the updates. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Kim Graner. She's gonna be talking to us about the BIA self-governance amendment number ten, some radio station funding.
Good morning. Um, we received amendment number ten to our self-governance BIA agreement um, for some, our funding for our radio station. The BIA is um, going to fund tribal radio stations. This is a one-time funding. Um, so this agreement is um, modification to our agreement is for two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine oh five. Um, the BIA had reached out to the tribal radio stations and you're eligible for this funding if you one, provide emergency programming and public safety alerts to the surrounding tribal community. Two, you maintain a license with the FCC. And three, agrees to comply with all the apple book provisions of the Communications Act of nineteen thirty-four. And we meet all those. So um, how this process works is um, one, part of my approval is for the chair to sign this also, and I'll send it back to the BIA. Um, they'll countersign it, then they'll reprogram the money and then we'd be able to draw it down. And this did come, this amendment came through after the shutdown. So there's something that the BIA, um, their accepted employees is working on. So I can't give you timelines, but they are working on it to get the money out to the tribe, so.
Sounds good. We'll just try to get this in there as soon as possible. If there's no questions or concerns, ask for motion to approve. We have a few questions from Tara.
Two forty-nine. What's the timeline on spending that amount?
It would be self-governance fund, so there is no timeline for expiration.
So, yeah, restrictions on that once, once we get that.
It just has to be spent on the radio station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it does say the tribe agrees to submit an annual list of accomplishments from the radio station. So this radio station will have to do a report annually till the money's gone.
Sounds good. If there's no more questions or concerns, ask for motion to approve.
Both to approve.
Move by Tara, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you, Kim, for joining us today. Next on the agenda, we have Nikki Irving. She has a couple of things to speak on. First is the approval of seventy-five dollar check for elders. Approval of seventy-five check for veterans. And then the third is a sole source request for a striker for ambulance medical equipment. So Nikki, hi, hi. Thank you for joining us online. And first, we have approval of seventy-five dollar check for elders.
Yep, this is an annual thing that we do every year. Um, seventy-five dollars, we have approximately nine hundred elders, I think they told me. So we're looking at roughly oh. Sorry.
Sixty-seven thousand five hundred.
It, there you go.
There's no questions or concerns. Ask for motion to approve the approval of seventy-five dollar check for elders.
Both to approve.
Move by Tara, have a second.
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Next, we have approval of seventy-five dollar check for veterans. How many veterans do we have, Nikki?
Approximately a hundred and twenty-seven. So that would be nine thousand five twenty-five.
There's no questions or concerns. Ask for motion to approve seventy-five dollar check for veterans.
Both to approve.
Move by Tara, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Next, we have a sole source request to striker for ambulance medical equipment.
Yep, so what we're gonna do is we got um, like emergency state aid money from the state of Minnesota last year or within this past year. We need to expend it by the end of the year here. Um, I was trying to get a monitor from another company, but due to some issues, they're not gonna be able to provide that monitor now. So we're gonna go with the Striker's Life Pack fifteen monitor and the Lucas three chest compressor compression system for a total of sixty-seven thousand forty-five dollars ninety-two cents. And the current um, equipment that we have in our ambulance is probably almost twenty years old now. So, so it's a good update.
There's no questions or concerns. Ask for motion to approve the sole source request for striker for ambulance medical equipment.
Move.
Second.
Move by Robert, second by Tara, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Never getting that the whole time. All right, next. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you for joining us. Next on the agenda is Randy Long. Randy's gonna be talking to us about a purchase from SHI for security cameras for tribal administration building. Thank you for joining us today, Randy.
So, how you doing today? I'm like, oh. So, good morning, council. Uh, I'm here to ask for the approval of the purchase of security cameras for the tribal administration building. Um, cameras are old and it's coming out of uh, the Department of Homeland Defense Grant. Um, cameras are old and it's coming out of, uh, the Department of Homeland Defense grant. And we have three quotes, I think you guys have. And the winning quote was S H I. Or you can make tell you how much it's for. Sixty-one thousand five thirty-three thirty-six.
Would that be this building?
Yes.
And my only question is, would it replace every?
All the cameras in this building, yes. Uh, they're originally from when the building was built, so.
Okay. There's no questions or concerns. Ask for a motion to approve the purchase of security cameras. From S H I.
I have a couple of questions.
Couple of questions.
Replacing all of the, um, cameras. So I know there's some that are inoperable, so that would make them.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Both to approve.
Move by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you for joining us today. Next on the agenda is Rhiannon Strong. She'll be joining us online. She's gonna be speaking to us about a M O U with twenty-one forty-two for early childhood programs. Thank you for joining us today, Rhiannon.
Good morning. I'm just here to present the M O U we have with twenty-one forty-two. Uh, it's an agreement that establishes the working procedures between twenty-one forty-two and Boys for Early Childhood Programs for our special education services. Um, it's something we do yearly. It went through legal and it does every year. Jeff had no concerns, so we're just coming for signature today.
Perfect. I do see the Jeff's email attached to the documentation. If there's no questions or concerns, ask for a motion to approve the M O U with twenty-one forty-two. Move by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you for joining us today, Rhiannon.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Next on the agenda is Simona Benner. She's gonna be talking to us about the revision to the Indian Child Protection Act background investigation policy. Hi, Simona.
Okay, so there was revisions to the Indian Child Protection Act background investigation policy. To change regular contact. Um, with or control over Indian children to any contact. Um, under the definitions of covered positions. Um. Within the meaning of this policy, if the position has any responsibility for an Indian child or children. Within the scope of the individual's duties and responsibilities. As those duties and responsibilities are defined in the job description for the position. Or any contact with an Indian child or children on a reoccurring or foreseeable basis.
Don't think council has any questions with this one, should we ask for this?
Questions?
Um. No questions or concerns? No, we had asked for this to close the. It just seems like. It should be in policy if there was any kind of contact with any child. That they should have a background investigation done on them. Just seems like common sense, so. There's no questions or concerns. Ask for a motion to approve. Revision to the Indian Child Protection Act background investigation policy.
Move.
Move by Robert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you, Simona, for joining us today. Next up is Terry Defoe. She's gonna be talking to us about a S H I P grant agreement approval, but I wanted to take a second. Um, give an update and say congratulations to Janil Gagali on the current election. She will be taking office on Friday, uh, ten days after the election, since there was no contestation of the election. She will be entering office. We are going to be planning a swearing in and, uh, we will update everybody on when that date will be. She was trying to keep it low-key, but you know, we can't. It's a big, it's a, it's a big event, so we're gonna have some cake and stuff. We'll let everybody know when that swearing in will be. But she does take office on Friday. And congratulations to the Northwoods Grizzly volleyball team. They're heading down the state. We have a few players on there, so congratulations to them. And also the Cleo Spears. He's traveling to state for cross-country, representing Northwoods. So, representing Boys for it. Okay, so Terry. Defoe, thank you for joining us today. You have a S H I P grant agreement approval to talk to us about today?
Yep. Uh, wish you everybody happy Wednesday. Thank you. This is a statewide health improvement, uh, grant. Uh, we've had it for fifteen years already, so this is just a new funding cycle. Uh, it employs Rebecca Adams, uh. And it requires a match. That's why it had to come here for standard, uh, signature from the council. The match is completed. It's meshed with salary. Um, parts of my salary are included. Um. It's, we just received this, like, within the last one or two weeks and if we. It's, it starts November first, but we're not able to act on it, it or use any of it until. After the first, until it's signed. Good? No. Hi, reverb, some reverb going on. That's okay. Okay, so, um, the grant addresses the leading preventable causes of illness and death. Such as tobacco use or exposure, poor diet and lack of regular physical activity. And other issues is determined by the commissioner through the statewide health assessments. These activities support. All communities. I must write me had a typo on there. These activities support where all communities are thriving and all people have what they need to be healthy. Health equity is achieved when every person has the opportunity to attain their, uh, health potential. So just submitting this for signan- signature. It's an ongoing grant. It's five-year cycles. Um, and because of the match, Jeff just said, uh, we need to present it to the council for signature.
Sounds good. I did review this at. I mean, it sounds like a lot. It's my, my first grant with a match, so I had to read this one. Says say forty-one thousand, but it's split up over five years, so it's only, we only put down eight thousand a year. Well, that's not too bad. It's nothing crazy. It's not forty-one upfront. It's eight thousand a year and we, we receive eighty-two thousand. In return from the state, so it's not a crazy deal. If there's any, um, questions or if there's not any questions or concerns. Ask for a motion to approve.
I have just a really quick question. For, for the, uh, the eight thousand that we have every year, is there any way? I hate to sound so penny pinchy, no, but I know it's H H S funds. But is there anything that can be applied to in-kind? Or has it already been applied? That might be a Kim. All in kind. No problem. There we go.
There's no.
I'm sorry, Kim did say that the eight thousand was all in kind and that's what I was. Um, that was the goal that I had in mind. Thank you.
Sounds good. If there's no questions or concerns, I ask for a motion to approve the grant agreement approval for S H I P.
Both to approve.
Move by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Terry.
Me which?
Which? Next on the agenda, we have Teresa Drift. Teresa's gonna be talking us, to us about resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-six, working with Minnesota Tribal Collaborative. For two new programs.
So I'm actually not the person that's gonna be talking to you about it, but, um, uh, I'm just gonna introduce Melita. Who is, uh, the Boys Fort representative to the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative. She's gonna tell you a little bit about the collaborative. And then introduce, uh, the folks that are gonna talk to you about the resolution that's, uh, that we're presenting this morning.
Sounds good. Thank you and welcome, Melita.
Hi.
How you doing today?
Hopefully you can hear me.
Oh, we can hear you.
No, good. Um, our tribal collaborative is a collaboration with ten Minnesota tribes that are working together to prevent and end homelessness. For relatives on and off the reservation. The voting members are appointed by the tribal leaders. The Minnesota Tribal Collaborative has been working together for over ten years. We have successfully changed state and federal law and have brought a range of funding and resources to address homelessness. And so, um, the, we have two programs that are up for, they're gonna be speaking. The first program is Val Whitebird. She's the HUD Youth Homeless Systems Improvement. It's. Y E S C is a federal grant to plan and establish systems to prevent and address youth homelessness. The Minnesota Tribal Collaborative HUD Y E S C grant is focused solely on native youth. And then next presenter will be Tracy Hug. It's the Right at Home Program. It is a national privately funded initiative to prevent homelessness. The Minnesota Tribal Collaborative has planning dollars to develop a homeless prevention program targeted to native households.
That's awesome.
Neat.
Thank you, Melita. And next you said Tracy's gonna be talking to us?
Yeah.
Good morning. I'm Valerie Whitebird. Can I pass this out to you?
Yes.
Information.
Welcome, Shane. While we have some dead air here.
Good morning. Sorry, sorry for being late. I was in a, um.
How you doing today?
M C T Finance Corporation meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I always ha- I always have to have big, big print. Um, so. My name is Val, like I said, my name is Valerie Whitebird. Uh, I'm the Y E S C coordinator. Uh, with the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative. Um, so Y E S C is a planning grant. Uh, and it's for the improvement of, uh, the youth, youth homeless systems. Um. And we're focused on the tribes. With, um, it's ten of the, ten of the eleven Minnesota tribes. And, uh, the literature that I passed out, it pretty much explains everything. Um, so I'll just, I can give you a few minutes to read that.
You're asking for permission to work with other tribal programs that we have?
Yeah. And then also we have, like, the draft that, that I have here is, um. Uh, it's a community survey.
Okay.
It's, it's for the youth. Um, and it'll be the, the tribal youth that it goes to. Uh, and we also have, um, provider surveys. Um, I don't have a copy with me today, but there is a provider survey that I can send also.
Okay.
And, uh, on the second page of the information sheet. Um, it, it's just what is needed from tribes is the support, support for our efforts, uh, permissions to work. With related tribal programs to identify barriers, gaps, challenges, strengths. Uh, successes in existing programs or to assign appoint person to work with Y E S C. Um, and we also, like, we have the homelessness person, uh, that works with the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative, Melita. Um. And also we would like the ability to come back, uh, and present. Our, our results through the, the information that we collect.
Okay.
Um.
Shane has some questions.
Okay.
Well, looking at your, thank you for the information first off. Welcome to Nut Lake.
Thank you.
You know, on your first page, down towards the bottom. It says a key objective is significant progress enhancing services, coordination, reducing barriers to housing and support. And increasing youth engagement and program design. Now, what exactly will that all entail? That is really kind of like a really wide open question.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Um, so. Like, for, what I've been finding is that, like, with, like, for example, Red Lake. And I believe also Boys Fort have really good youth programs. Uh, but there's other reservations that do not have, um, they don't even have youth programs. And so, like, with Red Lake and Boys Fort, like, your programs would be models. Like, good models for the other reservations. Uh, so. That would be, like, you know, something that you could maybe share with other reservations. Yeah, and this, and helping, helping other re- reservations, like, develop. Good youth programs. Like just collecting that information and collecting, um, like with the, like the youth surveys, what's working, what's. You know, like, what, what works and.
The, um, second question is on page two. And, um. It talks about where it says the main focus of Y H S I will be identifying the gaps in existing homelessness youth services. Now, have you identified those gaps yet?
No, we haven't, not yet. Cause we have, so we have to go to each of the ten tribes. And, well, we, and I say tribes, the only reason I say tribes, I know it's reservations. But the only reason that I say tribes is because we do include the, um, those, well, Dakota Sioux. Reserve, reservations also. And so that's why the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative refers to everyone as tribes. Um, so we, we have to, we're visiting all. Ten of the eleven tribes and the only ones that, uh, aren't included are the Shakopee Midwakaton. And that's because they don't really have a homelessness problem. Okay, so.
And, um, down towards where it says what is needed from tribes and, and you talk about support. And it says support for our efforts, permission to work with related tribal program to identify barriers, gaps, challenges and strengths. Success in existing programs. Now, my concern is that would that be violating our data privacy or, or HIPAA laws and rules here? If Dan could answer that, or maybe if Jeff's online, if he could answer that?
I'm online. Um, I can maybe speak to at least a part of that. So I know that the resolution that I worked with Teresa on, um, and. and you know, when it references surveys, I think the sharing of information with tribes, there's language about aggregating data and making sure it's not like personally identifying information so that there is information sharing among tribes, but it's aggregated. And so, you know, once it's aggregated, it doesn't, you know, there's not concerns necessarily about individual information and breaches of confidentiality. I think those presenting can maybe confirm that that's how the sharing works, but that's my understanding based on the materials that I took a look at.
It also states, "Any data will be exclusive ownership of each individual tribe."
Yeah. Yeah, and they don't, there's no identifying information that's going to be on the surveys. There's no name or anything like that.
I had a couple of questions. How long has YHSI been around? And have we worked with Boys, have you worked with Boysport before?
It's relatively new. It just came out and it's, it's kind of took a bit to get it going because we established a, yeah, like a youth action board was kind of like the first step that they wanted us to do. And then, well, because it's nationwide and it also includes WAM, Hawaii, Alaska. And but we're, like the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative was, well, we're partnering with the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. And so, and ours is focused on tribes, like Minnesota tribes. And so we, we're unique because we're working with 10 tribes where they, like, the rest of Minnesota is working with like the COCs. So my job is kind of big because we have like northern Minnesota to southern Minnesota. You know, so my visits are going to be all the way from Grand Portage, which I'm doing on Friday, all the way to Lower Sioux.
Right, that's a big area.
But we're going together, so Tracy and I. So we're trying to not overwhelm you guys too with, you know, like separate visits. So that's why we're collaborating.
Sounds good. Is there any more questions or concerns from council?
How long is this grant going to be supposed to go?
In early 2027, we should have everything. And then we will, we would come back with, you know, with results. And that's where we stay. You know, like the ability to come back with and present, you know, our results. And then, like, and we'll have the, like, the funding resources and all of that, like, information available.
Okay, because what I'm going with is that once you get going, like you find out the gaps, what the gaps are, and then you find out the grant ain't going to be renewed, the funding's not going to come back again. So now it's going to come back to the tribe to try and pick up that shortfall in the services. And if the tribe can, and hopefully Boysport will be better prepared to do just exactly that. Thank you.
There's no more questions or concerns. As for motion to approve Resolution 38-2026, it's working with the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative for two new programs.
Move to approve.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor, say aye. Oh.
Oh, we're not doing them one by one because there's two of them, right? Okay.
Sounds good. We're going to hold on that little.
Be much, but we're good with this one. Let's give it a second.
We're going to talk, thank you, Tracy. Tracey is going to be presenting some, the other program.
I have a charger, but my cord is plugged into this table and it's not charging enough.
Yeah.
It looks like it's plugged in. Oh, okay, it wasn't plugged in only. That doesn't work. I'm just going to set this up to sharing my slideshow. Well, I'm getting ready for the slideshow. I just wanted to introduce you to our two, with the Right at Home program, we hired three elder consultants, which help us to kind of guide us and steer us as we're planning for this new prevention program. And two of the elder consultants have joined us today as part of the team. We have Pat Leary with us, who has just retired from the state of Minnesota. He's been there for years and years. And then we have John Hudson, who is also a prior employee of some of the homelessness support programs in the state. We have one other.
Joining us today.
We have one other consultant that is working in Bemidji today, so he couldn't join us. So we also have a steering committee too. So just to start off, my name is Tracy Haug. I am the Right at Home Planner for an innovative and new homeless prevention program. And so with my slideshow, I was just going to kind of share with you guys. So what we're doing is we're planning for the future of our sovereign tribal relatives who are unhoused or are at risk of becoming unhoused. And we're in the process right now of identifying who is going to be our priorities. So we have, you know, we have people that are already unhoused. We have people that are at risk of being unhoused. And the prevention program, the idea of that is to prevent people from becoming unhoused. So we're focusing on doing a lot of things that are going to help us to do a community assessment to determine what our priorities are, how we're going to spend the money. One of the things that I really like about this grant opportunity is that it is a publicly or a privately funded planning program. So we have the opportunities down the road, once we get this program planned, to access funding that is not regulated by HUD or by the state of Minnesota. So it'll be coming in for the tribes, to the tribes, for the tribes. And the program is going to be written by tribal entities. So we know how to take care of our people best. And this program is going to be tailored to the tribes' needs, each tribe's needs that are in the tribal collaborative. Shakopee has expressed some interest in what we're doing. We're trying to develop that relationship right now. Hopefully, we'll have some access to granting that they do down the road. So not only written by the tribes, for the tribes, but possibly funded by tribal people. So it just really feels good. It feels like we're making a difference long term in the lives of our relatives who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of that. So this program that is partnering with us is called Right at Home. It's out of California. And these are some of their statistics that they had that just kind of point at kind of how bad that homelessness, the homelessness numbers are getting. They've been growing over the past probably three years since COVID. And then what they had found was that more than half of all Americans are just one paycheck away from ending on the streets. We all know that as tribes in the collaborative, we talk about that all the time. We can't succeed in ending homelessness without making urgent actions to stop it before it happens. The Right at Home program is partnering with us. And we're seeking to substantially reduce the number of individuals and families who are losing their homes and trying to lay a groundwork for a federal homelessness prevention strategy. So we've already had opened up talks with Alaska. And it sounds like we may be talking to a program in Austin, Texas, and also Wisconsin is interested in what we're doing. So we're kind of planting a seed that is probably, hopefully, going to be something that's going to, other tribes can take this model and do what we're doing so that they can do tribal focused services for people that are needing prevention services. I am the program planner. Right now, I'm gathering information. We're writing surveys. We have a technical team out of a place called Homebase, which is associated with Right at Home out of California. They are helping us with creating a survey right now, Wilder, who you guys are familiar with. Wilder does the homelessness surveys every, every other year, every two, every three years. And they will be our data gathering entity. So they're going to be helping us with surveys. We're also doing a digital survey. And we're going to be doing focus groups, which is part of what was in the resolution, was permission to be able to come here, hold the focus groups both here and in Vermillion with people that have lived experience accessing and successfully receiving services and people who have lived this experience who haven't received services so that we can do that community assessment about what works, what's not working, and detail those gaps out and decide how we're going to write that programming. And then again, this is our planning work. We get to identify the target areas. We're not, HUD is not telling us who it is. The state of Minnesota is not telling us who it is. We get to say, "These are our target areas." We get to decide that. And then we'll also be doing some information gathering for people that are struggling with barriers like mental health, substance abuse, coming back into the communities after being incarcerated or treatment programs. And we'll focus on what the tribal collaborative members see as the highest need. Again, to fill some gaps that are not being filled right now. So assessing our community needs is going to be the focus groups, the listening sessions, and then the surveys that we have. We will be holding these sessions along with Valerie Whitebird, who does the YSC program, again, to try and use our time wisely and not inundate all of the tribes with a lot of information and several meetings. It's our hopes that this new prevention program will be able to be something that we start the fire with, right? We're hoping that, and it's looking really good because we're just doing the planning right now and we're already having other tribes from Alaska and from Texas and from Wisconsin interested in what we're doing. So it's our hope that that will continue to grow and that we will be able to help for seven generations or more. It's really the goal for what we're going to be doing with this. Again, we can plan this program as we see fit. We will not have the same barriers that we currently face being funded through the state or federal sources. We get to write the program. That's what's really exciting about this is it's going to be written by us. We get to say, "These are the people that we want to help, and this is how we're going to do it." We get to identify who our sports serves and how our relatives qualify for their services. And then we'll also be doing some data backup to that. So Wilder will be doing information gathering to, when it comes time to go live with the program, we'll have data to back up our, all the planning that we, numbers of people, how much we're spending, what was successful in the last three years, what was not successful. So that data will also back up what we're doing. I just wanted to thank you guys for hosting us today and for letting us share this information with you. And I hope that if you're interested, you can go to the Right at Home website. It'll give you information about some of the pilot communities that are already doing this, this kind of prevention. And then we're also looking at a toolkit that they offer through Right at Home to help us do our planning.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tracy. Really appreciate it, and I look forward to having Boysport name on this project. If there's any more questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns, just that the area that you guys are focusing on, like you know, mental health barriers, substance abuse barriers, also the returning to the communities after incarceration. I think that's a huge one that we're lacking in. And I think that's a huge step in our direction.
Thank you.
You know, and I commend you on putting that in there. And as a caution, all the ongoing issues that we face as band members and as a tribe, you know, with historical trauma and then all the other stuff that'll come in, like, you know, the meth and the addictions and all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
If there's no questions or concerns, as for motion?
No offense to anybody and for elder consultants, but I just wanted to know if at any point in time that you'll be able to use anybody from Boysport or neighboring reservations that we easily recognize? And I'd like to get to know you both and everything, but we have some elders that are, that know our communities a little bit, you know, a little bit better, so would have really good advice. Just an idea.
That's a good idea.
And then I'd like to commend you on this and taking this huge initiative. I've seen success where our tribal members take the lead on things or other tribal members. Where I've seen it, I come from, you know, Conservation DNR, just back here. And I've seen that with Grand Portage took the lead on moose counts and moose collaring and all the data in, you know, in those areas. And the state is actually like that program. And now they follow the protocol that was developed, you know, at Grand Portage. So careful when they come knocking on your door trying to get all your ideas and all of your work that you've done. But you know what I mean? They will look at that and see that it's working and develop even better protocol. State would probably do that. So maybe which coming and putting this together and putting so much work into it, I appreciate it.
May I wish for your time today?
That's Robert's turn. If there's no questions, as for a motion to approve Resolution Number 38-2026?
Move to approve.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any silent? Before we continue, we're going to take a break here for 10 minutes. 10 minute break. I got to grab some water. So 10:15, we're going to reconvene at 10:25, which? So ten fifteen, we're going to reconvene, reconvene at ten twenty-five. Which? And in Net Lake, in the Eagle Room or at the Vermillion Social Center from twelve to twelve forty-five, there's going to be the Seven Grandfather Teachings Lunch about truth. So make sure you join in or you can even join online. There's a Teams meeting code. That's available if you can't make it in person in Net Lake or in Tower tomorrow for lunch. And then this Saturday, there is a volleyball tournament at the Vermillion Wellness Center starting at ten AM. You can contact Earl Vilebrand to sign up for that one. There's free shirts for the participants, so make sure you sign up. And Net Lake Wednesday volleyball at six PM. But next, it is ten twenty-five, so we will re-adjourn the meeting. And next up on the agenda is Tracy Dagan. She's going to talk to us about a contract agreement with the NUSIS HTX for license plates and tabs. Sure if I pronounced that correctly, if you could correct me, Tracy.
This is just a standard, um, contract, so there shouldn't be no, uh, Jeff had looked over and improved it, um. They have been doing a wonderful job for us. I, I have received many compliments on our plates.
Okay, it's just a contract for the, I see what you mean. And like you said, we're receiving some good compliments on these plates here?
Very, a, a lot, you know. When I travel around, uh, around, they, they notice our plates. And there are getting more and more MMIR, MMIR, uh, W, W one plates out, but I, I still believe ours are the best.
Sounds good. So it looks like you're asking for a contract agreement and then approval for the chairman to sign this agreement, right? It looks like. If there's no, is there any questions or concerns from council? Now, ask for a motion to approve the contract agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you, Tracy, for joining us today. Next up on the agenda is Miranda Lilia. First, she's going to talk about a policy to reorganize or recognize the retirement of staff members.
Good morning, council. In your, um, packets, there is a policy to recognize the retirement of staff members. We've never had a policy. We have recognized staff member resigning, um, retirements previously. Now we have it in a policy. We have some, um, guidelines for supervisors and departments to work within. I am requesting that this policy go into effect retroactively as of October first, twenty twenty-five. It was reviewed by Jeff. He incorporated some changes, edits. Those were incorporated into the policy.
Questions from council before I ask for a motion?
Uh, no questions or, or whatever. Just that, um, it's a good policy. I think that's interesting. It's good that you're implementing it. Thank you.
Yeah, this would be a good way to recognize across the board, um, a uniform way to do this. Um, again, some some retirees or some employees, you know, choose not to publicly get a rec, you know, recognition or they don't want to party. So we need a, you know, we need to, um, recognize that also and but my thing is I don't see a, a budget to go with any of this is has the budget that we take care of, um, staff members. Is that a certain budget or is that something just on a case by case basis? Just so that we plan for this on an annual?
It's, um, it's incorporated into the eight, ten general fund budget and there's some, it's, there's like, if it's a salary thing, it's, there's a line item in there called employee recognition. And then there's another line item for some other stuff, so.
I just think it should be by itself.
Okay.
You know, and then planned for annually. So we can keep track of what that is or if it goes up, down, um, and helping with our retention of employees.
So within the policy, the third bullet point after standards slash rules for awards and gifts. It does state generally the total cost of all expenses for a staff member's retirement party and any gifts purchased using department funds. So in most cases, it should be the department funds paying for the retirement. And then if they had no funds, Kim would then they use eight, ten? Yes?
Oh, yeah. Yes, because it, they have to see if it's allowable in there. But not everybody has, um, has flexible dollars.
Okay, awesome. That's all the questions that I have. And I like how, again, how uniform it's going to be in recognition. I'll move to approve.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Shane. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Thank you, Miranda. Next is, uh, the Ghost Lake discussion.
But previously, we had, uh, the individuals from Ghost Lake, uh, representing the Ghost Lake film present to council. I believe that would have been two or three months ago. It was left to the executive team, who is the CFO, the CEO of Health and Human Services, the Human Resources Director, the IT Director, and myself to determine where we would be able to make a twenty-five thousand dollar donation that they were requesting. We did have discussion at a recent executive team meeting. We had Von De Lee Carr from four, seven, seven program come up and we discussed the donation. After lengthy discussion, uh, we determined that if approved, the donation of twenty-five thousand dollars can be taken out of the opioid settlement funding within Health and Human Services. However, the executive team does not recommend your approval of this donation at this time due to the federal government shutdown and financial contingency plan phase one implementation. We do not feel that this is a good time to make a donation when our staff are facing reductions in salary or hours due to the ten percent cuts within phase one. Once I sent the poll to council, it did not pass. I did have a discussion with Jacob White, one of the, I believe he's a producer for the film. Due to some funding complications, they have decided to put off the funding or the film until probably springtime. Um, within the plot of the film, it does need to be during like hunting season. And so they figured springtime, it still would probably look like a hunting season. And so they have decided to delay the beginning of that film. Um, hopefully at that time we will be in a, by a better financial. Um, we'll be better off financially and able to, you know, do the twenty-five thousand dollar donation. But this is presented to council for your, um, consideration.
First off, I think when this was first proposed to the council and, and I reached out to Dan right away. And this was before the, uh, government shutdown stuff started happening and um, I talked about asking if there's any way that Health and Human Services could assist them with this and, and um, I went down, if you want to come up and help elaborate on it. And he brought up the, um, opioid settlement. And then, uh, during the government shutdown, when this proposal came to the tribal council, I got, again, reached out to Dan and talked to him before I voted.
And just through a quick comment, we do have a comment online.
Is there something specifically that you want me to?
The second time that I called you, um, I think it was like a couple of weeks ago and asked you about, you know, about the funding and, and, um, you know, what the government shut down and all this happening and, and how would this really impact us if we did this?
Yeah, and I, you know, the question that Miranda articulated quite well, um, we do have a funding source available. The question really is, is this the appropriate time for the council and the band as a whole to make a donation at a time when we're reducing other things, whether we have the funding available or not, or we have a funding source available or not. The funding source is available. It's the perception and the timing around what message does it send to our team? When we're reducing other things and we're making a donation for something that um, we do believe will bring some value to the band. It will bring some recognition and some marketing opportunities. Uh, at the same time though, it's really difficult to you know, really compare a return on investment to those marketing efforts compared to the livelihood of the people that are being affected due to the shutdown right now. So it's really the perception. It's not us as an executive team trying to say whether we should or we shouldn't. Um, although from a timing perspective, we're making the recommendation that we should delay. The funding source is available. It is something that we could use the funds for. Um, whether that's approved now or delayed until a later time, those, those funds are available and it's acceptable.
And when that poll did come to us, that's one thing I did state underneath my vote is that talking about withholding when we disperse the money. So to that effect. Thank you.
And the comments online state, this donation should not happen at all. Never ever a donation to for this film. These artists should have, should have the backing to fund their own films. There are many grants available for artists to apply for. We should be funding our own people who are developing their film skills. And also opioid settlement dollars should be spent on the band members.
I do agree with holding off on the Ghost Lake donation.
Possibly even in the spring of twenty twenty six. The opioid settlement, you'll still have that in spring of twenty twenty six. Is that correct?
Yeah, the nice thing about those dollars are there is no expiration date on it. Yeah.
Alright, um. And, and the one thing is, when this came about and this discussion came about, about the Ghost Lake, I really do like their, their program, what they're trying to do. I see their message. But at this time, I, I wouldn't want to go through with the 25,000. And in my own words here, I'm almost contradicting myself because I was an advocate for approving the check for the elders and that is coming out of tribal dollars and approving the check for the veterans. And I did state to the council that that's the only exception that I would have for spending money right now. It's not a distribution. It's something that I feel strongly about. So I wouldn't want to hold that back. And those are the only two right now that I would be in favor of. And we've already approved those other two. So I would say no to Ghost Lake at this time.
Another comment online, something to consider as well is our youth. We just did an amazing project with them and they made a really good song, Just a Thought.
I'd just like to say from the beginning of Ghost Lake coming in contact with us about this about this film and stuff, I really liked the idea of of what they were trying to say, what they were trying to do in this movie and you know, and I think the the honor of them using our lands and and coming to do this production on in Boys Ford, just, you know, really could help out in the long run with stuff like with, you know, Fortune Bay and different businesses around here. And, you know, I just think at this moment with the federal, the government shutdown, you know, it's just not the time. And I'd really want to, I'll really be looking forward to this coming about in the spring and talking more about getting this accomplished. Thank you.
One other thing that I would add for consideration, particularly if we buy ourselves some time moving into spring. If you recall, they presented a budget and how they were going to use some of their dollars, which were in turn, dollars provided by Boys Ford through a donation. But then they'd be spending some of the money renting rooms at Fortune Bay and so, so on and so forth. So the money would be coming back to us. One thing to consider is, and Kim and I had talked about this, and I believe Kim brought it up previously as well. Rather than exchange dollars, just like we do for some grants, is there an opportunity where instead of paying them a cash donation, we provide them in-kind services? Such as hotel rooms or the use of some of our facilities in lieu of the cash. So I think if we were to buy some time, there's an opportunity to go back to that group and say, rather than us give you money and you turn around and give it back to us through some of these things, maybe there's an arrangement where we could do a little of both instead of, here's the money and they, they control how it's being spent. Maybe there's a way that we can collaborate on that so that it's not an exact uh, exchange of money one way and hoping that we receive it back. Maybe there's a way that we can do a little bit of both or, you know, get them where they need to be so that it's a win for all. Just something to think about.
I, I just wanted to mention because there was a comment in regards to the youth. Um, the LIEC, Simona has a vote out right now to the committee members. Uh, we had received a request from Wawate. Um, Ryan Basian was the representative that sent the letter. So that they, the youth could work with some different presentations and whatnot at the school. And so once the LIEC votes on that, um, they would possibly receive the $2,000 donation from the LIEC committee.
Thank you, Vana.
So this was just a discussion. It wasn't a formal request?
It was a formal request from Ghost Lake, yes. So we'll need a vote.
So how would we do that if, if we're postponing a payment to reconsider in spring?
If it was, if council voted to deny it today, I would contact Jacob White and let him know he can resubmit a request closer to production time.
I'll move to deny the Ghost Lake request of $25,000 at this time.
Motion to deny on the floor by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. I think that's the last item on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we do have one more comment online. Please bring this donation to the people before this comes back in spring.
Okay, thank you for the comment. If there's no other questions or concerns, ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten forty-four AM.
Both.
Moved by Tara. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any silent? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at ten forty or five-ish. Just switched. Big switch, everybody for joining us. Thank you.